Welcome to the town council meeting for Monday, September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. We've completed our executive session. We're now at the pledge allegiance. Mr. Abay has agreed to lead us.
Those allegiance to the United States of America, considering public which stands one nation under indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. See, see some cowboy hats in the room. That's always a good sign. Some public announcements, we'll ask if the council has any shortly, but quite a busy week. The last week we had a house fire. We had a deceased person found on thirty-second Street and we had a wildland fire six miles north up in the Tonto. So there's a lot of action this past week. I want to mention that there is an item on the, there is a proposition on the budget this year. It's called Prop four seventy-nine. And in the, the chaos of all the propositions that we're likely to see, some, some areas are getting just page after page. That's the one that funds the freeways, the light rail, all of the arterial roads in town. It's the one that has brought the town from when I was a kid where we had no freeways or one freeway to where we can get around. The biggest selling point is it decreases the amount of time people spend on the road. And it has done that really dramatically. So I just point that out to everybody. Does counsel have any public announcements?
I was up at Spurcross this morning, could see no smoke coming up from the fire.
Many of us attended the annual League of Arizona Cities and Towns Conference this year in Phoenix. And it was, and it was a good four days, I believe, and valuable to many of us who attended the sessions and met with other dignitaries in the state. And so I think that's very beneficial for those of us who are elected officials to communicate with others around the state in similar positions. And to learn from each other and to co-mingle with each other. It's, it's a good opportunity and I appreciate the town sending us.
With that, we'll move to call the public.
Mayor, first I want to note for the record that Terry Webb provided written input that's been provided to all of council. And our first speaker tonight is Abraham Abay.
Good afternoon. I want to first of all congratulate you all for the election. And the elect. Mr. Bunch, I want to thank you for the many years of your service. I hope that your retirement is well. Mayor, I want to congratulate you for your election. And my prayer for you all to the Lord is that he may grant you through his grace, the wisdom for a very, very complicated time with many complicated things that are on your plate. And that said, one of the things that I want to encourage you is the Bartlett, Bartlett water, wet water situation. When I've met, when I've been in many of these meetings, one of the things that is quite understood is the supply of wet water being more challenging than many other situations. Last week, the meeting here was just amazing with all the information about the infrastructure. But I want to encourage you to consider the water supply before all the other things, because otherwise you're putting the cart before the horse. And then if you have all the infrastructure and you don't have any water, it really doesn't do the town any good. So my encouragement to you is please consider all the sources that you can get your hands on with wet water. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then I had a question. I have a card from Jody.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, just wanted to give you just a brief update again about the fire. We heard a little bit about it tonight. Over the weekend, the point fire that is in the New River area kind of peaked. And at one point it looked like Spurcross was actually on fire. That was very concerning. The, the staff and I met with the Tonto Forest Commander who was commanding the fire resources as well as Daisy Mountain on Friday morning, as it was starting to become a concern to us as well. And I'm very pleased that despite the other fires and demand for resources around the state for aerial support, we were able to get that on Friday shortly after twelve noon. And that continued through on to Saturday as well. The point here, I, I just wanted to let the council know and the public is that the, the staff was working very closely behind the scenes and doing our best to communicate through our website and also through social media. But it was not our incident. So it was a Tonto Forest Fire. And so as a result, we have to defer to the Tonto Forest and their fire command for like the public information that we could release. As an example, they had committed to doing some aerial support to fight the fire. And we were asked not to share that information because at last minute, it could be pulled for some of these other fires that were happening in the valley. But in the end, I think I'm, I'm very pleased with the cooperation between Tonto Forest, Daisy Mountain and the town. I, there's a couple of things I just want to really emphasize to the community here though. And that is for people to sign up with social media, the town's social media sites. You know, both X and Facebook, but also importantly, our town website. These are the sources, official sources of information that we put out. The other thing is if we indeed needed to do a, an evacuation, one of the best tools that we have currently is using what we call Code Red. It's an app that anybody with an Android or a Apple device can go ahead and download. You can actually do the registration on the website. If you go to our website at cave creek az.gov. There's information that directs you to signing up so that you can either get a text announcement or a recorded voice announcement or an email. These are very critical because in the event that we in the future need to do an evacuation, we will do basically draw on a map where that needs to take place. People that live in that area who have registered through those various different means. In the end, I just wanted to just tell you, we did our best to try to get the information out and do updates. We did at least two updates each day from Friday through yesterday. So, and we'll continue to update until this fire is extinguished. That's all I have, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to give you that update.
Thank you. The action items, the consent agenda, the first is the approval of the April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four regular town council meeting minutes. Second is the approval of the May one, two thousand twenty-four special town council budget work session minutes. The third is the approval of the May second, two thousand twenty-four special town council budget work session minutes. The fourth is the approval of the May sixth, two thousand twenty-four regular town council meeting minutes. And finally, council discuss says council discussion, but we're, it's on the, the consent agenda. So if we accept that consent agenda, it can be pulled off for discussion if needed. But it's the action to accept a dedication of easement for a ten-foot wide public utility easement on Assessor's parcel two sixteen dash sixteen dash zero one four located at seventy fifteen East Continental Mountain Drive, Cave Creek, Arizona eight five three three one. Does anyone on council wish to pull one of those for discussion? Okay, does we have a motion then to accept the
consent agenda?
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The general agenda is a council discussion and approval of intergovernmental cooperative purchasing agreement with the lead contracting agency, League of Oregon Cities, as required by the NPP Gov purchasing cooperative by authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the town and approval to purchase a new Freightliner firewater tanker tender with a three thousand gallon tank and a one thousand gallon per minute pump for the town of Cave Creek by authorizing the town manager to execute on behalf of the town a national cooperative purchasing agreement with Fouts Brothers Incorporated of Villageville, Georgia for this vehicle for an amount up to four hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars. Presented by the Director of Community Risk Reduction.
Mayor and Council, good evening. This is a follow-up to previous council meetings where you adopted some policies for our purchasing agreements. And so I'm going to be the first one to come before you with the request. When we signed the agreement with the Daisy Mountain Fire Department, the original intergovernmental agreement, it was the town's responsibility to do the fire station, do the equipment, do the fire engine, which we've ordered and paid for, do the brush truck, which we've done. And the last large purchase was a firewater tender. Initially, when we put that budget together, the cost as the cost was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And in spite of everything else going up, we started looking for water tenders and these water tenders went up dramatically. But we were able to find a fire truck manufacturer in Georgia that could meet our specifications for a tender. And we actually made a trip to their factory to check it out and check out their quality of work, to check out the actual vehicles. And I'm coming back to report that this truck meets all of our specifications for a brand new water tender. For a while I was looking to refurbish water tenders because we didn't think we had enough money in the budget to, to purchase them. But we found this one. And it is available and it can be delivered if you take these actions as requested. So we did the inspection there. This, this truck fully complies with all the national specifications for new vehicles. It's a Freightliner with a Cummings engine, Allison transmission, the tanks, the lighting. It has everything that we require per the specs. When we went out to look for how much this was, the Fouts vehicle is this vehicle. Velocity gave us a demo. It's a similar vehicle. Their cost was over five hundred thousand dollars. BBG trucks, their cost for a truck that we specked out initially with the same equipment on it came out to over six hundred thousand dollars. And then when I talked to the different people about what can we get for a refurb, which is really not the best option. Because those, there's reasons people are getting rid of those used trucks. And we would have to refurb it and put a lot of money into it. That still came out between two hundred and four hundred thousand dollars. So being able to find this vehicle from Fouts, they will sell it directly to the town. And when it gets here, we will license it and pay the taxes on it. This is actual vehicle. When we went to the factory, they had two of them off the line and another one coming off the line. And people lined up to buy their vehicles and, and we put in a request to purchase this exact vehicle right here. Say three thousand gallon tank with a three thousand gallon portable tank with it. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Questions from council? I, I just have, I, I, I think your presentation showing the alternatives, what the alternative costs, I, I love that where you show what the options are. So when you spend four hundred thirty-six thousand dollars, we have some comfort that we're getting a good deal. Of course, a pickup truck costs a hundred thousand. So okay, so at this point, no, no questions from council. So I guess we are a public comment.
No requests for this item, Mayor.
Okay. So we're looking for a motion?
Motion to approve the intergovernmental cooperative purchasing agreement with the lead contracting agency, League of Oregon Cities, as required by the NPP Gov purchasing cooperative by authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the town and approve the purchase of a new Freightliner firewater tanker tender with a three thousand gallon tank and one thousand gallon per minute pump for the town of Cave Creek by authorizing the town manager to execute on behalf of the town, a national cooperative purchasing agreement with Fouts Brothers Incorporated Villageville, Georgia for this vehicle for an amount up to four hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Second.
Cynthia has the second. That's her first official act. So it's all it's like when you get your first hit in baseball, you always get the ball. There we go. This is Dusty, you have the
No, I just think it's this, this is the final piece of gear that we need. I do have a question when we're getting our fire engine.
They went back last week and did the final inspections and walkthrough of all the specs on the engine. So I'm expecting it to be here within a month. And by purchasing this tender also, I'm expecting it hopefully to be here within a month. Also, this is available to us. So before the fire station opens at the end of the year, we will have both pieces of equipment in town.
Good. Cynthia, you had the second, so you get the second time.
Thank you. I just think it makes a lot of sense to go ahead and, and purchase new at a good price to support the rural needs that we have for the tanker. There've been a number of fires in our history where a tanker was certainly necessary. So it'd be good to have it aboard.
Other council comments?
Will both these vehicles be at the open house for the new fire station?
Yes.
Are we still planning for a nice time, a nice party?
Absolutely, Mayor.
And, and what date is that?
We don't have a, a date set yet. We're getting really close. We're looking either the week before Thanksgiving, which is really pushing it, or the week, second week of December. But we will be before the end of the year.
Okay.
And, and Mayor, if I may, I've talked to Mr. Ford and we're going to try to, as he's come in, have him out before a council meeting. So you can see him. So you don't have to wait until the, the dedication of the building.
Okay, this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Augerton? Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Royer?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. So we've got ourselves a tender.
Mayor and Council, thank you very much for all the support you've given me over the years as we've put all this together. As was mentioned, this is the final big piece.
Ah, cool.
Thank you.
Free retirement.
Yes, I'm like speech.
My microphone's going off, so I'm sorry.
He's still trying to beat Sean.
Item number two is council discussion approval to award a contract for the two thousand twenty-four pavement management plan update to IMS Infrastructure Management Services for an amount up to twenty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars presented by Tyler.
Can you hear me now? With the two thousand twenty pavement management plan prepared by IMS coming to an end, tonight I'm here to request authorization for this contract with IMS to conduct an updated survey of all the town's roadways. This survey will provide the town with an updated five-year pavement management plan and a current assessment of the town's overall pavement condition index. With the new metrics provided in this survey, we will have an updated information allowing staff to properly identify capital projects. Ensuring funds are being used efficiently as possible. During the survey, IMS will drive and survey every single one of our paved roads in the town. With their equipment, they'll be able to measure cracks, rutting, surface, you know, distress. And then they'll be able to give us all the information we need to make our new plan. And after that, I pause for questions.
Questions from council?
Tyler, these are only our roads. They're not the privately owned roads.
Correct.
And, and so you, you'll use this information to prioritize where we spend our money on the worst roads. Some towns, you know, Scottsdale has a an objective that the whole town, I think it was ninety, eighty or ninety, it's, it's higher than we, I mean, it's eighty because we have seventy, I think, is our current standard.
Yes, and I think Paradise Valley probably has the highest level. It's, it's very high. It's ninety or ninety-five. They, they call it A level, but that's, yeah, totally.
And, and, and we're, we're behind the curve on, on the roads. So prioritizing is, is essential.
So just, I'll, I'll just kind of chime in a little bit because I'm, I'm a little familiar with this as well. And, and so you've seen this before, but what they'll do is the data from the, the survey where they basically drive over with this highly sophisticated equipment will go ahead and, and get put into a computer module as to your, the mayor's point, and it will help prioritize. Then every time we do a street segment, any improvements, it gets put into the database. And it continues over time. We maintain that database. And when I say we, it's, we'll be doing that under contract with this company. And then they will help us continuously figure out the types of maintenance that we need to do to maintain the levels that the council has set. So it's, it's a great, it's a great setup. It's IMS is one of the top firms that other cities use. Most cities don't do this in-house. They, they tend to have firms like this do it. So I, I think it's a great, great company and it's one that we're going to get some good value out of.
Will this be an annual contract?
It's a five-year contract. Well, it's, it's to give us our five-year plan. There is an additional two thousand dollar program that we can, if it comes out to that we can, we get a ninety-day trial run. If we feel that that program is, you know, cost effective, then we can, we can pay two thousand dollars a year. Comes out to, and that would be under two thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty cents annually. And that's within house.
And I would highly recommend it because we are very, you know, very flat as an organization, that the cities that are larger have the staff that they can input. What it is, is you're inputting the data as you're making the improvements. And so it would be for them to continue to do that database updating and monitoring and then helping give guidance and direction on prioritizations based on the data that's in the database.
Madam Vice Mayor, though, currently you're capped at twenty, twenty-nine thousand four thirty-five with a contract term ending next June. And if you wish to go farther, then we would amend that to provide for these additional funds.
Other questions?
Along with this pavement improvement plan, what does the town do in terms of non-paved roads? In terms of assessing what's needed? Is there a separate improvement plan for that?
Yeah. So as of right now, we're doing quarterly maintenance on the roads. And then as funding comes, we're trying to chip seal unpaved roads. I don't know if we necessarily have a complete plan for it. But as we've gained funding, we've done, we did two last year and we're trying to do more.
Okay. Any other questions? Public comment?
No input for this item, Mayor.
So we're at this point, we're ready for a motion?
I'll do it. This is a motion to award a contract for two thousand twenty-four pavement management plan update to IMS Infrastructure Management Services for an amount up to twenty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Second.
We need good roads, Tyler. You're doing a great job.
My, my comment is we're way behind the eight ball. We did not fund the last program we did when we used, I don't know if we used these folks or not, but we did not fund it. And we're way behind and we actually pulled money out of the reserves this year to try to get ahead of it. Unfortunately, the costs are coming in higher. Hopefully we can, but we need to catch up because if the roads get too bad, you've got to totally rebuild it. So this is not, this is a money saving program. We're going to save money by this. And we're also going to have, be able to answer people. He says, well, my road's in bad shape. When you do my road, we'll have, we'll know where on the priority system they are. So I, I really support this. I think it's it's a systematic way to manage the roads for the lowest cost possible and most efficiency. Agreed. Other comments from council?
I was hoping that we were going to get something, get an option with Tyler on an e-bike with a computer.
I don't know. I don't know. I think we'd have to go with the old school pedal bike. I can use the extra exercise.
See, we did, we did public comment, didn't we? Yeah, yeah. Okay. We're ready for a vote, I think. And it is financial. So it'll be a roll call.
All right. Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Augerton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Royer?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero and we're on to number three, which is council discussion approval and agreement between the town of Cave Creek and Cave Creek Rodeo Days Incorporated, CCRD, and Arizona Nonprofit Corporation for reimbursement of costs to construct the Skybox project to the town. Presented by the Development Services Director. Welcome, Luke.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, this, the next two agenda items are kind of inextricably linked. The first item for your consideration this evening is an agreement between the Cave Creek Rodeo Days Organization and the town of Cave Creek to reimburse the cost of the next forthcoming agenda item, which is the Skybox rebuild. As you're aware, the Skybox met with resistance from Mother Nature about three years ago and was destroyed by a storm. The town subsequently received insurance payback of approximately eighty thousand dollars. However, construction costs and everything else would make it nearly impossible to replace that structure in any form. Cave Creek Rodeo Days stepped to the plate, had plans commissioned to rebuild the Skybox with additional seating capacity and, and everything else. The, during that time, the council considered and approved the CIP and budget, which included five hundred thousand dollars earmarked for this project specifically. The town went out to solicit bids from different contractors. The town received, I believe, six responses. And I'll, I'll get into that on the next agenda item. However, this, the price is approximately five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars should council choose to approve this agreement this evening. Cave Creek Rodeo Days has pledged to pay back via promissory note payment schedule totaling forty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twelve cents on a yearly basis collected every May twenty-fifth for the next seven years to pay back the town's contribution to the overall project, making the town whole at the, at the end of that period and having the, the improvement made to the rodeo grounds. With that, I know Mr. Mike Poppenweimer and Mr. Mike Frederickson of Cave Creek Rodeo Days are here this evening. But if you have any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer those. Thank you, Mayor.
Questions from council?
Luke, didn't we receive some insurance money when that Skybox blew over?
Yes, about eighty thousand.
Okay, so that's going towards this reconstruction.
That's considered already kind of taken off the top of that overall expense, the five hundred and ninety-five. So if you add up the, the seven years, that's approximately five hundred and fifteen thousand that the town's going to be paid back through Cave Creek Rodeo Days with the other eighty thousand being that insurance payout to cover the entire cost.
Mike, and Mike, I invite you to the, to the podium there to, to, any, any comments you want to make about this? Anything you'd like to say?
Hate to pass up an opportunity to talk, Mr. Mayor, the town council. On behalf of the Board of Directors of the Cave Creek Rodeo Days, we're excited about this opportunity. And it's an opportunity to build that Skybox. Capacity is ninety-six. Our return on investment is about six years. Of course, it's longer now since the price went up, but we're going to pay back everything that we put into it. And trust me, Mr. Mayor, we're going to have a party. Okay, that we're, we anticipate selling, having a party for the town council as well as the, the town staff who works hard for us. We're, we're excited about it. We've already have a lot of inquiries. We've already had sponsorship committed for the next three years of forty thousand dollars a year. Our return on selling the tickets with a seventy percent capacity is around ninety thousand per year. So you can see the revenue of this Skybox is going to bring to the Cave Creek Rodeo Days, fits with Architechy Plan financially. And that is to put more money into the improvements at the arena. So it's a win-win for, for being an asset of, of the town of Cave Creek. But us as a group of rodeo, we can do more items, more events. So that's what we're excited about. This opportunity to make more revenue, more improvements and more events for, for the culture of the Western rodeo. I could go on more, but I'm going to stop there. And I appreciate the opportunity and your support. And we have our annual meeting tomorrow night, Cave Creek Rodeo. We'll make sure that we hopefully have some good news to share with our colleagues.
Well, Mike, I want to, I want to, oh, go ahead, you go ahead and finish yours and I want to
I was going to say, is there any questions?
Well, I, I, I just like to say how, how much I appreciate that the rodeo is a signature event and you are a signature organization. I, I just, I'm thrilled to death with the performance. The financial performance has been amazing the last, last few years. And it's a wonderful rodeo. So thank you for all your volunteer service to the town and to all of the North Valley.
You bet. Thank you. We appreciate your support. Couldn't do it without you. Thank you.
Mayor, may I ask Mr. Poppenweimer a question? Do you mean to tell me that Cave Creek Rodeo Days is going to outlay five hundred and fifty? Do you mean to tell me that Cave Creek Rodeo Days is going to outlay $515,000 for a structure that they don't own? That belong, that'll end up belonging to the town of Cave Creek?
And we're happy to do it.
I'll be darned. How about?
We're getting more, we're getting a good return.
I wanted to make sure everybody understood that because we've lost a lot of money the last three years by not having it there to begin with.
Absolutely. Yeah. Good point, Ernie. Who's a board member?
That's kind of inside.
Well, okay, but that brings up another question, and I'm not sure if this is the right time, but Luke, are we any closer to getting the title for the property? Because we're also putting in a lot of money to improve this arena and hopefully we'll own it one day.
Vice Mayor Roy, members of council, I believe, I don't know if it was part of the Maricopa County Parks and Recreation Director's presentation that he gave to council a few meetings back, but I do know that the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors through, I don't know what they, if they classify that as a resolution with the, with the board of supervisors, but they issued in writing their desires to have the patent issued on that land and subsequently dedicate over the, the deed effectively of the rodeo grounds to the town of Cave Creek. So they have gone full, full-blown initiating acquisition of that. As far as the time, it's going to be a county agency dealing with a federal agency, as you know, which may, which may take time.
But it's underway.
It is underway. Yes, ma'am.
Very well. Great. Thanks.
Question probably for Mr. Sims. The contract letter of agreement specifies interest-free repayment. Is that typical of agreements with the nonprofits or other activities that the town participates in?
You, you raise a good question. I mean, your concern is, are, are, are we giving up an asset and not getting a return in violation of the constitution? Given that this is for a public purpose, that's why. It's, you're allowed to spend public money for, in effect, economic activity in your town. And I think, listen to Ernie, I think the rodeo gives you significant revenue. And so it's perfectly legitimate. But if this were, you know, if this were a for-profit, not putting any money and, and taking all the taxes to themselves, I'd have a question. But I think it's perfectly fine, given that it's a partnership with, with, with the rodeo, they're a nonprofit and they're, they're, they're agreeing to promote activities in the town, so it doesn't violate the constitution.
Thank you.
A good question.
And if I may, and it is a town asset, so they will be dedicating it to us, so it will be ours. So it's really, I think as Councilmember Bunch indicated, it's like a smoking deal. I, you don't see too many of these come by council very often where somebody's willing to pay the full freight. Yes, it's not all at the, you know, all at one time, town is fronting that, but the worst thing that can happen is they don't repay it, but it's an asset we needed anyways for the arena. So it's, I think it's a, a good thing.
Other questions from council? Seeing none, there's public comment on this?
None for this item, Mayor.
Okay, so we're ready for a motion then.
I bet I could do that. I get to vote on it twice. We have 11 board members, so it's not a problem. Motion to approve an agreement between the town of Cave Creek and Cave Creek Rodeo Days Incorporated, CCRD, and Arizona nonprofit corporation for reimbursement costs to construct the Skybox project to the town for an amount up to $515,000.
Second. Hey, Ernie, you had the.
Well, yeah, like, like I said, that, you know, basically, the, the reason this is, our bylaws are written, the rodeo days bylaws are written to support the facility. And having been, having been there when these bylaws were written, there was a period of time where we were spending money on, on bleachers and that type of things and people, some people in town were not happy with us doing that. So it behooves the Cave Creek Rodeo Days and the town of Cave Creek to, to participate in this agreement because it increases the marketability of the rodeo grounds for other events, other times of the year, where we've only got it, the rodeo days have only got it for about 10 days and, and I think maybe we probably need it for two weeks, but we can talk about that later. But it's a good deal for both of us.
Good second. Tommy?
Two words. Section. Signature, signature. Location. Signature ER.
I do have a question, not necessarily related to this, I think it, but it is. Are you guys going to put together a plan for how you're going to market and?
Sorry about that. Are you guys going to put together a plan to, that talks about how are you going to market this for other kinds of events and get that back to us at some point? You can answer there.
Yes, see, we do have a strategic plan, it's under the financial part of it. And that's one like, Ernie alluded, we went from a board of nine to 11 because it's a, it's a working board and we just need more help to get to these other events. We already have a committee started for as a Western music festival. We also have a, a group that, with Mike here doing a twice fact barrel racing. Due to the fact we had 160 barrel racers at the last rodeo, they're just, they're contacting us. They've, they want us to put events on.
No, no, I, I just, at some point, I'd like you guys to come back to the council. I think it'd be a good idea and just tell us, hey, here's, here's what we're looking at.
Plus we have a plan on improvements to the arena too.
No, I, I mean, I just think it's, since we're jointly investing in these things, I think it'd be worthwhile for you guys to come back and say, okay, here's how you're getting your return on investment.
Okay.
So makes sense?
We can do that.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
I gotta say, no, don't lose sight of the fact that the property belongs to the, it will belong to the town of Cave Creek. And, and this organization here is, while they may wish to expand their authority over the grounds, the grounds do belong to the town. The town does book the grounds through the planning or development services department, I believe, what's her name?
Our permit sec Tracy Wilgus.
Yeah, Tracy, yeah, you know, so it, it really is the, the town basically does it. Our, our benefit or the benefit to the town from, from Cave Creek Rodeo Days is, is the, is the four-day rodeo that we've got. It's, it's not, I don't, I don't know that we want to be saddled with the management of the, of the grounds the rest of the year. There may be some issues where we actually say, hey, we'd like it this, this weekend for, for an event where we would be a less see again, as we are with rodeo.
Now, that, that's fine. I'd just like to see what is the use plan, whether it comes from the town council or whether it comes for jointly from the town council and Cave Creek Rodeo Days. Just here's kind of the plan for the future. Here's how we plan on using it. So don't care where, where it's coming from, but I would like to see something like that because we're investing some significant dollars here. And I know you guys are too.
Much more. Okay, so we're trying to have public, I already asked that question. So we're, we are ready for a vote then and this be a roll call vote.
All right, Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Augerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bunch?
Absolutely.
Vice Mayor Royer?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero and we're on to number four, Luke.
Yes.
So council discussion approval authorized town manager enter the contract with API general contractors for construction of the Cave Creek Memorial Arena and Rodeo Grounds Skybox Project for an amount up to $595,000 and authorizing staff to make appropriate fund transfers necessary to implement the project.
Mayor, members of council, thank you. This is part two of the previous agenda item. As you were informed during the last agenda item, when we looked at the budget considerations for this fiscal year, we were anticipating a cost to rebuild the Skybox at about $500,000. At such time that we solicited bids based off the, the town-approved construction drawings, we received six actually very good firms responded to our request for pricing, for proposal to construct. Going with the lowest qualified contractor is API, who is the, the contractor that we're asking council to consider awarding the contract so that town manager and town attorney Bill Sims can complete the contract and sign it and get the contractor turned loose to construct. They're anticipating to be completed with the Skybox by January. There's opportunity to be done sooner, but their, their target date, their conservative target date at this point is January of 2025.
So be ready for the next rodeo.
Yes, sir.
Let's hope so. We can't afford to pay the 44,000.
And then just for general knowledge, the pricing that, that was proposed by API, we put in the, we put in this document not to exceed 595,000. The other bids ranged from that number up into the almost 900,000s. So pretty, pretty decent spread across the six. So just food for thought on that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that, that you may have. Thank you.
Questions? Okay, there's public comment?
No input for this item, Mayor.
Okay, so we are ready for a motion? Ernie, you want to make it again? Our resident board member?
Absolutely. Motion to approve authorizing the town manager into a contract with API general contractors for construction of this Cave Creek Memorial Arena and Rodeo Grounds Skybox Project for an amount up to $595,000 and authorizing staff to make appropriate fund transfers necessary to implement the project.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, you had the motions?
Yeah, the, the agreement that we just approved before this wouldn't mean anything if we turn this down. So we need to move forward and get this going to make it clap, a much more classy event for the town of Cave Creek.
Our, our thanks to the rodeo committee for getting this.
Other comments? My comment is I want to compliment you on getting six bids. I, I'm going to be highlighting that every project that comes in the future, looking for a minimum of three with that, unless there's something going on. But congratulations on that. That makes it comfortable for us to approve something like this when you know that it's been bid out like that. So, so thank you very much. And I, this is, I'm, I'm really behind this. It, it is your responsibility to market the, the non-rodeo week use utilization. And now we've got this nice facility, we hope to see it used because we don't have, we have a desert awareness park and we have Spur Cross and this is, I guess, the, the third big signature park and event that we have in town and ought to be used. So. Okay, this is financial.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Augerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Royer?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero and.
If I'd worn my hat tonight, I'd be throwing it up there about now.
Next item is council discussion approval of fiscal year 2024 budget transfers and to ratify contract for interim financial services with interim public management LLC presented by the finance director. Welcome, Sheri.
Yeah, it's on. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we're here tonight to ask for approval of some budget transfers and ratification of contracts for interim financial services. The requirements from an accounting perspective in our annual financial report, we would need to disclose what the reasons are for budget overages and what plans are to address that. Well, the easiest thing to do is just do the transfers that, that are needed to be done. So right now the town is operating under home rule, but that is setting an expenditure limit in total for the town. The statutes do say that we need to be able to identify based off of department, how much is being spent. So the analysis that we did, we're looking at by department and there were three departments plus one of the special revenue funds that had overages because of primarily things that were unforeseen at the time of budget. So with the town manager's office to begin with, there was turnover, as you know, that was not anticipated during the time that the budget was prepared. There was a compensation study and a benefit study that was done. So the total of those for that variance for the town manager's office is about 63,000. In order to be able to cover that, we're asking to take money from the general fund contingency to cover those. For the finance department, there was turnover as well in the finance department and a contract which were, is also part of this, asking for council to ratify that, that contract that originally the scope was thought to be within the town manager's authority to be able to approve that contract. It ended up going longer than was anticipated. So we're asking for ratification of that. There was four-year or five-year forecast consultant that did some work. And there was the cost allocation and user fee study that some of those costs were incurred during fiscal year 24. And that will be coming to you very soon. We have a work session scheduled for going over that user fee study. So for the finance department, that was over 102,000 that we're asking to also have covered with contingency monies. For the town council, so again, recruitment for a new town manager was something that wasn't anticipated included at the time of budget. And the consultants that were used for helping to create the performance metrics that the town would use was also not anticipated. So for town council, that was over 39,000 that we're asking for a transfer from the general fund contingency. The final one is special revenue funds. So with all the settlements that are happening related to opioid use with the, the different agencies in fiscal year 24, there was 2,900 spent of some of those distributions that we have received so far for the, the opioid settlement. And it was used for wellness and awareness for first responders and families. And there is a, a grant fund contingency for any of those outside funding sources that we're asking to take some of that money to cover that. Are there any questions?
Questions?
No.
Seeing none, there is a public comment?
No input on this item, Mayor.
Okay. Looking for a motion then.
I'll make the motion. Motion to approve fiscal year 2024 budget transfers and to ratify the contract for interim financial services with interim public management LLC.
Second.
Obviously it's business that we need to finalize. My only comment is while we spent a lot of money on a interim financial director, we're very grateful that you're with us now.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Dustin?
I don't think we really have a choice on this. I think we have to clean up the books. So I think this is very supportable.
Other, other comments? Question, other comments? This is financial.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Augerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Royer?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. We're on the number six, which is.
Mayor, if I could just say, the plan is that we will be coming to you probably about quarterly during, throughout the year instead of at the end of the year. I just came on board. We're trying to clean all this up. But there is a plan in place to be able to bring any of these things like this to you sooner.
Thanks, Sheri. Next item is council discussion and approval of a sole source agreement with Ferguson Water Works for the purchase of Neptune metering equipment and software for an amount up to $500,000 for the next three years presented by the utilities director.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And after hearing the last item or the item before last where you were happy sees multiple bids, I'm sorry to bring a soul source to you, but. So water meters are actually a very, play a very critical role in the water system because it does measure the water usage at the customers. It allows us to bill for it. And actually moving forward is something that as we change out to our metering technology, will hopefully be able to change people's water patterns and out conserve water. So it's very important that, important that we actually have good water meters in the system. The town is actually standardized on Neptune meters. About 2012, there was an evaluation done in the, in the Desert Hill system. When the town bought the Desert Hill system, it actually required staff to manually go and read those meters. So starting in 2012 and it sort of wrapped up just as I got on board in 2019, they got changed out to a Neptune meters. So right now it, they work very well. It takes us about a day just to read the Neptune meters with our drive-by system. So it's been very well. It takes us almost two days to drive through the Cave Creek system and we always seem to have batches of failures every few months. So those meters are aging out. So one of the reasons that we want to do this is actually to replace the existing meters, which we believe are under reporting. And then also the meters themselves actually have a little radio repeater that allows us to do the drive-by. Those are failing also. So council is probably aware that we have the federal grant to help us change out the Cave Creek meter. So what happened is we got caught with the fact that a few years ago, we asked for some council authority with Core and Main. Core and Main was the distributor of Neptune meters at the time. We asked for seven hundred thousand dollars of authority for a forty-year period. Well, we, through the grant coming through, we've actually expended that. So we made our last purchase under that authority at the end of last fiscal year. So we now have our Conex full with meters ready to be installed as part of that project. But we actually still have about three hundred and sixty meters in the five gateway sites. And the gateway sites are actually gateway slash collectors. So as we do the upgrade from a drive-by metering system to a AMI called automatic metering infrastructure, we will actually have collector antennas that collect the data. That allows us to send to the cloud, then actually we can review it daily as well as allowing customers to see things like usage. So if they see an alert, so it's a great improvement. But we've used up that authority with Core and Main. And just as we were about to come back with an extension, Core and Main elected not to move forward with representing Neptune meters anymore. So they went with a different meter manufacturer. They absorbed, two companies came together and they decided to let the Neptune meters go away. So it's actually Ferguson Waterworks is now the approved vendor, authorized vendor for Arizona. So being authorized vendor that allows them us to buy products and have the products warranted. So we're looking to get authority to make an expenditure Ferguson Waterworks. The other large agencies Chandler, Goodyear Surprise are also Neptune-based water meters in the valley. How they've handled this has actually done similar to us with a sole source justification. What town attorney told me is per our town code is I can't do a cooperative purchase off someone else's sole source. So this is our sole source to allow us to make the purchases moving forward. What we're looking to do is get authority to expend up to five hundred thousand dollars over the next three years. So we have about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of equipment still to buy on the metering upgrade project for Cave Creek. And council might recall that we started a program in Desert Hills, starting this year, we put fifty thousand dollars in to start changing out those meters. The meters are just over ten years old, typically have a ten-year lifespan. And some of the old meters, we want to start changing out as we want to move to the AMI system. The original Desert Hills meters are actually an older generation. So that allows us to do that upgrade at the same time. So we figure this will give us enough authority to complete both, both complete the Cave Creek water meter conversion and start the conversion in Desert Hills and get a fair, fairly far along before we have to come back and ask for more authority at this point. So, you know, we're doing a sole source because Neptune is the author, or sorry, Ferguson Waterworks is the authorized vendor. You'll see as a part of the, the package, we included their price sheet. So actually the meters themselves, although it didn't say it, they're actually are giving us about twenty-five percent off all the equipment, including the meters themselves off of manufacturer, manufacturer suggested retail sales price. They're offering that to all the other valley cities. So we're actually getting the purchasing power of the other valley cities brought together. But I can't do a cooperative purchasing because of our procurement code off any of the other contracts with Ferguson Waterworks. This is our exclusive contract with them. With that, I can answer any questions.
You have a question? So Sean, there isn't a quality issue with Neptune earring. Is that the reason? I mean, I'm curious as to why, why?
Core and Main?
Core and Main.
No, they merged with another vendor and the other vendor was actually repping census meters. So they elected not to have two competing brands. And actually, I think the meter manufacturers don't like that also. So Core and Main, when they absorbed the other, there's a merger, they elected to become a census meter vendor. So that left Ferguson then picked up the Neptune in the valley. So it doesn't need to quality, just had to do with after merger, they actually had two vendors and they didn't, they didn't want to, and the meter vendors didn't want them to compete with each other with the same supplier in the valley.
And then secondly, you might have already mentioned this, but are these smart meters? And are these being covered by the grant that we got for smart meter?
About half of the authority that we have, we will get covered through the grant. So about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we still have some meters to buy, about three hundred and sixty meters to buy and the five collector sites, which we can put back through the grant and the grant is fifty-five percent town funds and forty-five percent federal funds. So we will be able to charge that back to the grant.
Okay, great.
Questions? Do you have a, I mean, one of the big items here is the actual dollars loss of waters that go to a house that are un-metered because water meters never read high. They always read low, they wear out and read low because the turbines don't turn as they wear out. Sand goes through them from the water well. Do you have a estimate for the, the percentage water loss system-wide that this might correct?
Mayor, I believe, you know, right now we're reporting over a ten percent water loss in our system. I believe this will account for five plus percent with these meter changes. So we'll get, yeah, I do believe. The meters that we've been pulling out, because the Cave Creek system, a lot of the meters are getting to be twenty-five years and older in the system. And when we do pull them out, just because of the radio earths failing and we send them off for testing, they're usually reporting only ninety percent of the water consumption, if that. So as we continue the meter changeout project, well, the other thing that this has done to us is that part of the metering changeout projects, we were trying to do cooperative purchasing off the old agreements that actually also allowed for the installation of meters underneath the requirements of the federal grant, which is to use the prevailing wages as defined by the Davis Bacon Act. We actually have to go do our own solicitation right now. But as we get that wrapped up and we start changing the meters out in bulk in Cave Creek, we're going to be testing about ten percent of the meters as, as it actually was a requirement for the grant that we do that. And then we'll actually be able to report back some numbers of on about ten percent of the meters as we change them out of the twenty-five hundred meters in Cave Creek and give you true accurate numbers where we're at. But as we've been pulling them out of the system, yeah, we've seen a lot of, we've had failed meters that are completely not reporting. And, you know, one's reporting less than ninety percent of the water consumption.
So this is, this has quite an economic, it has a huge economic advantage to the town, to the water company, water customer. And a fairness, because some are not paying their share, which means others pay more than their share. So it's a fairness issue as well. Okay. Other questions? Okay, so we have public comment on this.
No input for this item, Mayor.
Okay, ready for a motion then? I will make it. Motion to, oops. Motion to approve a sole source agreement with Ferguson Waterworks for the purchase of Neptune water metering equipment and software for an amount up to five hundred thousand dollars for the next three years.
Second.
Second by Cynthia. This is a key element in our conservation program is it's a fairness, it brings in water revenue, it's going to help us communicate with customers where water uses is. This, this is a golden program. And so I highly support it.
I think it fits nicely with the information we had on the utility master plan and changes for improvements. Again, in the accurate reporting and getting that unaccounted water loss down to a better percent.
Other comments?
It's fortuitous that it's twenty-five percent off as well. So that's huge.
We got to say it, okay. Okay, this is financial, so we'll take a real call.
Councilmember Augerton? Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes? Vice Mayor Royer?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye, motion passes seven zero and we are on to council discussion approval of resolution R twenty-two-four dash twelve, a resolution of the mayor and town council, the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving and authorizing the town to enter into a development agreement with LS and SS properties to share in the cost of upgrading the town's existing zone nine water booster station to provide fire flows presented by the utilities director.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And we also have Michelle Vanqueithen online. She actually helped to draft this development agreement. So if you have any specific questions, Michelle is available for that also. So just stepping back, LS and SS properties actually represents Continental Mountain Estates. So that is the overall master developer for that property. And so this is our development agreement with that subdivider. Okay, so Continental Estates is a thirteen lot development in the northeast corner of Cave Creek. It's located in our pressure zone nine, and I'll actually have a map that helps explain some of this. So the existing booster pump station can only provide the domestic demands for that pressure zone of, but we have two pumps, about thirty gallons a minute each. So that's enough to meet the, the water demands that the customers have there, but not for fire protection. So in two thousand and fifteen, the town entered into an original development agreement with LS and SS development. And that was to have two components. The existing distribution system was mostly six-inch lines. There are some eight-inch lines also, but the six-inch lines became a constriction when the fire flow was required to be a thousand gallons a minute. So you couldn't get that much flow through the six-inch line. So the town was actually going to, and that six-inch sectional line was actually outside the development. So the town took on the burden of actually replacing that six-inch line. And once that was done, then the developer was going to require to do a booster station upgrade project to get the thousand gallons minute of fire flow. And then they were also getting, going to have a reimbursement agreement built into it. So they'd get some proportional cost of that back. So two things have changed. With this last master plan, the town looked at these more rural areas in the town where there's, it's just more residential demands. There's no commercial up there, no businesses. And we've said that a prescription of a thousand gallons a minute is not ideal for these large areas, these outlining areas. So five hundred gallons per minute is a better flow. When you look at that, then the distribution system, you don't need to replace the six-inch lines. The, the existing six-inch lines are adequate. So last year, last December, close to the expiration of the original agreement, both parties of town and the developer agreed to terminate the original development agreement. But at the same time, we also agreed to, to work together to actually put a new development agreement in place to help address the fire flows in pressure zone nine. And this, this graphically shows you what pressure zone nine is for the town. So our Rockaway reservoir booster site is actually the site, the reservoir is up there, but we actually have a small booster pump station that actually boosts up into the area immediately, adjacent to the east. There's a future waterline loop that actually came out of the master plan. So that's something we don't need to do right now, but I wanted to highlight that because our master plan talked about that as a future redundancy reliability improvement. But we don't need to do that right now. But you can see Continental Mountain Estates on the east-hand property. So under the old development agreement, one, one house has built and they were allowed to put in a, a fire storage tank. And there's another property that's actually met before the termination agreement. So it's, it's working through its development process right now and getting permits. But up there, we've seen the pressure zone right now is about twenty-three meters or lots that have water meters. And there's about twenty-four when you look at the entire area that, that could be served by the, the pressure zone. So we looked at proportionality and then the fact that, you know, it's the, the, the need for the fire booster station had two requirements. One was the, the needs for the town subdivision code requires that before building permits get issued in the subdivision, there's supposed to be fire protection available as defined it as at the fire hydrants. That wasn't being met. Now it was actually catalyst of the two thousand and fifteen development agreement. But there's also a need when you look at the, the properties that are actually outside of Continental Mountain Estates in this area that in pressure zone nine that did not have fire protection. And as the town is aware, you know, one of our biggest risks is actually wildland fire protection. So we had a pressure zone on the edge of the town that we couldn't protect from. So it made sense for us to work together with the developer on the new development agreement. And that's what we've put together. So the town actually, the small scope of work to have NCS engineers look at the design. What's tricky about this site, I mean, I'll go back to the beginning slide. This is actually a picture of the booster pump station. What you're looking at is I call it the tin can. It's, it's fifteen feet below grade. So let me take one step back here. You can't see this booster pump station because that's actually the above-ground electrical equipment. The booster pump station is completely below grade at this point. So the reservoir itself for Rockaway is depressed. It's about fifteen feet, the bottom of that reservoir is about fifteen feet below the natural grade out there. So it's a struggle to try and get and to tie into the piping. That's part of the thing that's running to the cost up here as well as electrical. It has limited electrical supplies to this site. We can't get three-phase power out here, which is what's necessary when you get into the larger horsepower pumps. Like it's, I think it's a fifty or forty-five horsepower pump required to meet the pressure and because of the head out here, for the elevation. But NCS today cost estimate, they came back with just under a million dollars, nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars with some contingencies built into it. I think it's a good cost estimate to design, design and construct the improvements necessary to get five hundred gallons minute of fire flow up to the area. So the town agreed with, have LS and SS properties provide three hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the construction of that project. If you look at proportionality by lots, it's actually they're, they're helping out a little bit more. They're going to put that money into an escrow account. So the town will actually take the lead on the project. That means that I'll be engaging, probably coming back with a scope of work for you to authorize, to have NCS is what I'm thinking of doing since they did the preliminary design to do the detailed design. And then we'll reimburse them with the escrow monies and then go to construction in two thousand and twenty-six. We'll put a new improvement in the capital improvement program to cover the construction costs. And again, we'll draw down from the, the developers escrow account and then contribute with the town's fund. So it's going to be a jointly funded project. We think it's a, it's a win-win for the town. We can do a future waterline improvement that's to help the system up there. It's not necessary right away. And we provide fire service to allow this developer to continue developing. And then also to provide more so from the town standpoint, fire protection in our pressure zone nine. So this is, I've already gone through some of this. Oh, actually, that's, sorry, that's wrong slide. I slipped in there. So right now we have, we're asking council to authorize a resolution which authorizes the town manager approves of the town manager intention to the development agreement. With that, I can answer any questions.
Questions? Seeing none, there's public comment on this?
Nothing for this item, Mayor.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion on this one? I will make it. Motion to approve a sole source agreement with, oops. Motion to approve resolution R twenty-two-four dash twelve, resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving and authorizing the town to enter into a development agreement with LS and SS properties to share in the cost of upgrading the town's existing zone nine water booster station to provide fire flows.
Second.
It, it pains me to pay this much money for anything. But it's, it's necessary to clean up both a, that development agreement issue and also to add bonuses having fire flow in that area.
Every time you come before us, it reminds me of a Baptist preacher, reach down deep into your pockets. I'm sorry, I'm being a little bit funny, but.
That, that is cheap.
This is cleaning up an issue that's been lingering out there for a while. So I understand it. I don't like it, but I understand it.
Other comments from council? Michelle, I see you've joined us. Is there something you'd like to add to the equation here? Thank you for staying up late with us. Okay, so we're ready for a vote.
All right, Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes? Councilmember Augerton? Vice Mayor Royer? Mayor Morris?
Aye, motion passes seven zero. And we are on to number eight, council discussion possible action to direct and authorize the town manager to submit a letter of intent to Salt River Project, requesting admission to the Bartlett Dam Modification Feasibility Study Steering Committee as a non-voting member presented by the utilities director.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I don't want to interrupt you, so Michelle, continue on the line. We actually had Brad Hill, who's, you might remember Brad from our presentation on the utility master plan. So Brad has actually helped us map out the water resource component of the master plan. And the town is actually engaged with Brad to help move forward to make sure we can map out the town's water resources. So I think these are the two people that can help answer any more specific questions for you. So, yeah, the slides, Brian. So just a few weeks ago, the town has a presentation by Salt River Project on the Bartlett Dam Modification Feasibility Study. It's a bit of a mouthful, and this is sort of a graphic that shows what they're proposing to do. I'll go through a little bit of details and then just highlights some pros and cons that council should consider in moving forward with this. So a little background, Salt River Project does manage water on both the salt and Verde rivers. So I learned a little bit in their presentation, they operate seven reservoirs, six on the salt, two on the Verde, one on East Clear Creek. The issue is on the Verde River, the two reservoirs that they have, which is Horseshoe Dam and Bartlett Dam, there's a sedimentation issue. So they've lost a considerable amount of capacity to store water on the Verde River. And I think as they brought it out in their presentation, that sadly, in some storm events not too long ago, they actually had to do releases. So the reservoirs are not functioning as they're intended to, which is to store water during a, a high water flow events, either through stormwater or snowpack runoff and allow that to be tapered out in the valley. So this is an issue overall for the water resources. So what they're trying to do is to actually regain the capacity that's been lost. Over forty percent of the capacity, Horseshoe Dam has been filled up. They looked at things like drying it to dredge that material out to regain that capacity. And what they concluded in an earlier study with that it's the best opportunity is actually to raise Bartlett Dam and effectively let Horseshoe go away. Horseshoe Dam's drainage area will go away and be recaptured by, um, Bartlett Dam and raising that structure. So, uh, the one option that moving forward with would actually create, uh, 305,000 additional acre feet of what they're calling new Verde space and, and VS capacity. That's, that's capacity. It's over and above what they're going to get from the horseshoe dam. That's partly just on the, the logistics of, uh, creating a dam structure. And how that can impact the town is that while we are not part of the Salt River Project, and when, um, you know, I've worked in other jurisdictions where we, uh, they were considered on projects. So the, uh, project lands in this map helps explain that. The, the blue, the blue hatched area is considered the on project lands. That's the project, that's the property within the Met, Phoenix metro area that can get to relax, direct deliveries of Salt River Project water, either salt or Verde River water can get deliveries to. So typically, um, we have access to the call, the, the CAP canal. As you can see that, uh, bisect that and I've highlighted that in the yellow. You see a little cave creek at the top end there. So, uh, right adjacent to Bartlett Dam ironically, um, but we have no way of getting that water into our system. By joining into a project like this, um, what happens is, uh, even though we're off project, um, this gives us access to some of the storage capacity of the Verde River water. So it's something new. It's a new water supply that we have not historically had of access to. And again, my prior experience is if, if you're off project, you're not getting Salt River Project water. This is a way for us to get into that, uh, watershed, uh, directly east of the town. So, um, they, they completed a, uh, review of the sedimentation, how to recover that sedimentation. And they, they, the recommendation was to move forward with a project, um, to raise the Bartlett Dam. Um, to, uh, so what's happening is a feasibility study is ongoing right now. And, uh, there's Salt River Projects, 22 municipal tribal and agricultural partners working together with, under, uh, with the Bureau of Reclamation. So the federal government through the Bureau of Reclamation are, are part of the project. And they're moving a feasibility study that in, in, is basically doing a, a design development, uh, 30% design. Um, because that allows you to do a cost estimate and also allows you to do an environmental assessment. Um, this is creating a new impoundment area. So there's obviously a lot of environmental things to consider. So once that report is put together, which right now it's on schedule to be completed sometime in 2027, then that'll be submitted to the federal government and that'll have met the requirements for the federal government's, uh, NEPA process, National Environmental Protection Agency, um, as, uh, not easy act, um, requirements for getting federal funding. So effectively they're feeding into a project to allow the federal government to help fund this. And why would you need the federal government's help is partly this, the cost. Um, I have another slide that mentions that. So at this point, um, the estimate for the cost is, has risen to the point that's about 1.2 million, $2 billion to do this project. So the, in the feasibility study, there's, uh, what's called a steering committee and that's made up of the different project members. And in this, within the steering committee, there's voting and non-voting members. Um, we were told in the presentation by SRP staff that there's a small window for us, um, to join the steering committee. Um, we, tonight, if, uh, there's a draft of the letter of intent that we would send in to SRP, who's chairing the steering committee, and then we would then provide some additional information. So the timing's perfect because we have the master plan completed and we can, uh, show the need for the town and why, what water we do need. And at November 15th, the steering committee members would vote to authorize the town to, uh, be, uh, added to it. Just last year, I think there was a couple of other members added. So some of the members have been on board since this project started in 2020. There's been a few others have been added along the process. So, um, then there's two options in front of us right now. Um, there's the non-voting member, I should, I'm sorry, since there's no voting, you should say non-voting members. And what SRP pointed that out is while they have the steering committee who, who meet and can vote on things, the non-voting members are just more participating on the side. And they actually have been, my understanding have been participating in things like the water allocation. There was a subcommittee, uh, that all the members were voted on to. And to be a non-voting member is about 200, or they pointed out at this point is $208,000. Um, and I, I caution that could rise a little bit because there's additional change orders as they go through this feasibility study that, um, those change orders will be wrapped into the project costs and then distributed amongst steering and vice versa. What they've told us is, uh, um, if we get elected and to go that route, we have to make a $90,000 payment November for, uh, right after the number 15th meeting. Uh, and then we have another payment of $30,000 in May of 2025, this current fiscal year. And then we have two other payments of $44,000 each in May of 26 and 27, and that would be completing the project. And then again, that could rise a little bit more. If we wanted to be a voting member on the steering committee, that cost rises to $628,000 is the current estimate. It would follow a similar, uh, cost schedule that they're showing here. You want? Oh, 682, apologize for that. Um, so what are the issues involved in this? Uh, after presentation, you know, a couple of things jumped out at me is, um, if you look back at the, uh, early version of feasibility report in 2021, they were estimating, uh, between different options, between 700 and 860 million dollars for construction. Uh, uh, staff shared with me, and I think they've mentioned at the presentation, but they shared with me that right now the current cost is, is $1.2 billion for the project. So the ultimate cost we're not sure of, and we still were a few years away before even funding. So will the, will that rise? And I'm not sure if they've built in contingencies into the, uh, how much contingency they built into current estimate, cost estimates. They're not sure of how funding will occur. Again, the request is going to go to the federal government to fund it. They're not sure if it'll be, um, they're expecting, expectation is about half of the project will be funded by the federal government. But then as far as the payment for the, the members, whether that'll have to be an upfront or be payment incrementally, uh, during construction or something like this, uh, what happened with the CA, uh, Central Arizona Project, the cap canal, the federal government funded that, and then we repay that as a member and having a subcontractor, we actually have a capital cost that we help pay off the debt service on that. So we're not sure which mechanism will occur. That's an unknown. And the biggest unknown for the town is that right now it's, uh, they, I think they mentioned 2020, 2032 to 33 would be the quickest schedule. They could see this happening. More realistic, it's going to be probably mid 2030s that this would actually happen. And as we brought up in the master plan, um, discussion is the town has an issue of what's going to happen with the central Arizona project, which is our main water supply after, at the end of 2026, when there's a reallocation. And then whether the state and then subsequently the central Arizona project then come back to us as a subcontractor will be reduced. So this won't help us meet that timeframe, but it is something in water resources, you'd have to have a long-term perspective. The other, um, issue is the variability in the, in the Verde River flows. So this is not going to add to our new water, our water portfolio to allow for new development. What this can be used for is to shore up our existing central Arizona project supplies. And the way it was explained in the presentation is quickly recap is historically, um, and there's been shortages in the Colorado River. The salt and Verde River have not had the same shortages. So effectively with there's, there's cuts, uh, temporary cuts in the Colorado River supplies. We could look at the SRP water through the Verde River water as a backup to that, to bridge that. But we can't use it for new development. Um, the other issue with that is that, uh, uh, we were told this, if we ask for a thousand acre feet, um, we actually have to ask for, uh, and pay for 3.5 times that because of the variability. So we would be paying for proportional share of, uh, uh, three, uh, 3,500 acre feet. If we wanted to get a thousand variable because of the variability in the flows on there. And that's just part of what they've built into their project. And that's what all the other participants are looking at having to face. Um, they also physical access to the water. I bring you back to that, uh, their map is, you know, SRP comes in and we do not have direct deliveries from SRP's canal system right now. As part of that presentation, they mentioned, uh, what's called the SCIF project, uh, which allows water, so currently water from central Arizona project can get into the SRP canal system. But you can't do the reciprocal, you can't get SRP water into the cap system without a booster pump station, which is what they're working on. There's a project to do that. We don't need to join into that right now. Um, SRP staff said that there's some time on that one. Uh, but we need to figure out the mechanism, you know, if we, if we go up down this path, um, you know, physically, how do we get access to it? And even if we got access via sending water into the central order project, we can't take it out at our booster station, which is upstream of that. So we then have to work with agreements with downstream users, um, to do water exchanges. And that was brought up in the presentation and something we'd have to work our way through. And most of, there's, uh, a good number of the participants in the project are having to work through that. And to be honest, we actually, uh, reached out to the city of Phoenix, but the idea of could we, uh, give, um, uh, some of our water to there? They actually have, I believe it's three treatment plants on the can, uh, SRP canal system. So could we do a water exchange, another IGA with Phoenix? That's something we'd have to work through. So we have a few years to deal with that, uh, and, and getting that done. And it's also right now, there's, uh, you know, it's a funding issue also. This was not put into the, the current capital, uh, program. So this would be using, uh, current general fund reserves to make the first payments and, uh, subsequent 26 and 27 payments. We could build those into the capital, uh, program. We have limited staff resources. Um, you know, uh, I've got a good team. Uh, we actually have, you know, we've brought on, uh, Brad and Michelle's helping us out, but there's a lot of things going on. As you can see from when we brought the master plan forward, that we're trying to move forward. And there's other projects that we're trying to work on to give us actual access to wet water. Our focus in the last year or so has been really on how do we get wet water into the system? And that's things like working on the, uh, Cave Creek existing wells. Can they be brought online? Can they be used to augment our, our potable water supplies? Um, or can they, uh, help us, uh, augment the, um, our, um, our, uh, our irrigation deliveries to Rancho Manana? And then we can get some beneficial use out of the, of, of our other, uh, water supply some other way, which we're talking about exchange, a water exchange with effluent with Phoenix. So that's another, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of issues. Um, and I don't want to say it's a complete negative, um, but there's, I wanted to make sure that council is aware of all the issues. Again, I, I really thank SRP staff for coming out and giving that presentation to us. Um, we probably should have asked them to do that presentation a few years ago to council. So there's an opportunity here. Uh, and then again, when we look at water resources, you have to have that long-term perspective, but can this town afford to do everything? Which includes, you know, something that in the future, um, you know, I'm not sure if all the participants will continue with the project once the final costs come through and how much allocation they're going to get. So that was a question that, um, uh, SRP staff, when I, I approached them, they're, they're not sure. Again, at this point, this is joining on in the feasibility study. So the town's responsibility ends at that submittal of that study to the federal government for construction funding. At that point, there'll have to be another, uh, um, agreement to continue with construction. Cause that'll have to all be outlined, as I mentioned, we're not sure of how construction will occur, how fun to be, how funding will actually have to be submitted. So there's some unknowns, but this gets us at least a seat at the table, have that discussion. Um, overall, it's a nice, good project. There's some issues for the town to overcome to get access to this water. And it does help shore up our water supply, but it does not add to our water supply, which, you know, again, with the variability of water is we have to weigh that off the pros and cons. And with that, we did make, uh, well, I wanted to give counsel and, uh, author, uh, recommendation is that staff was thinking that it, it may be good practice for the town to, uh, be a non-voting manner, uh, non-voting member to issue the letter of intent. And then hopefully the steering committee still has to vote us in. So we have, um, uh, November 15th, but we have the, all the documentation to provide that. I think we have a really compelling case of why we'd want to join on, but there are a lot of still unknowns on this project. And that, that does make me a little nervous. So with that, I can open up to discussion if Brad or Michelle want to, um, chime in and, and expand on what I, I brought up. So, uh, I'll open it up to council. Answer my question.
Uh, Michelle, uh, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I don't. I think this is a question of whether you, um, want to allocate, you know, limited resources to this project versus potential other projects. And I do think there are potential other projects to consider. So I would leave that decision to you.
Brad, how about you?
Mayor and council, no, I think Sean did an excellent presentation of the pros and cons and the details of the project. And Michelle just kind of reiterated what some of the questions are, are some of the recommendations that we were going to share with you. It's given your limited funding, are you interested focusing long-term, short-term or both?
Okay, questions from council?
John, do you remember the spreadsheet? Where they showed us the one on a, on a particular year where there was a, a surplus of water in the Colorado River and, and a negative on the Verde and then a pot. Do you remember seeing that spreadsheet when they did the presentation?
Yeah, Mayor and council member, yeah.
I don't remember it.
Oh, it was, actually it was a graph. It was one of the graphs that they had shown.
I mean, how, how reliable is that?
Well, Brad, you've probably worked with this more, but I, I believe this historically, and I'm not sure how far back the records go, is that, uh, again, the, the salt and Verde, um, have, have the, the, the droughts have been opposite of that, the Colorado River. And again, we're not getting access to the Salt River. This has just given us access to the Verde River basin. So of the two basins, which have been more reliable, we get access to one with this project.
I asked the, uh, SRP guys that, and what they said is it, it depends on the weather patterns. So if the jet stream pulls south, the Verde River and the, the, uh, Salt River get more rain. If the jet stream pulls north, then the Colorado River gets more rain.
Other questions, Tom?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, one of the things I like that you do is you keep us abreast of our relationship with the valley. You do it with MAG. If there is issues, uh, a year ago, you mentioned to me that you had observed a strong focus with the MAG meetings of trying to get people out of their cars and into other forms of transportation and so forth. Uh, this evening, it was a good catch that you did and the rest of us didn't about encouraging people to support the proposition on the November ballot that maintains the sales tax for Maricopa County residents that pays for everything from the expanded freeway right down the, the street here on Carefree Highway going north to Flagstaff to all the freeway ramps and so forth. So over time, I've observed that you provide a good reminder of our relationship, maybe a small puddle, but we're part of a larger political and policy ecosystem here in the valley. When the SRP presentation was made, to me, it was like the Willy Wonka golden ticket. It was like an opportunity for us to be somebody. Now, this is the last item on the agenda. And it's actually been written to where we can't even support a voting membership, I guess, because the recommendations for a non-voting membership.
Be mended.
You've spent the presentation time looking at your feet, not looking at the council. So I know you're walking, uh, a very careful, careful line here, but and I'm not a water expert. But it just seems as if the potential benefits to this agenda item and this proposal was regionalism. SRP has been delivering water since they recovered the Ho Ho Com canals years ago. And our status as a regional, hopefully voting participant, but I guess worst case, non-voting participant provides more than water. It provides a place at a table that we often don't get a chance for. Uh, before Mayor Bob and, and Mayor, uh, Bunch, I sat at the MAG Regional Council and we sat at the kids' table. We were between the Salt River Maricopa Indians and Carefree and Budguy and Talison and Guadalupe. It was the same table, but we were at the far end where they had to go like this to see us. And I don't think size or resources sometimes is the only consideration. I think increasingly in this state, and the mayor has reminded us as well to us, with legislation being considered to do away zoning that the league had to fight this year. We have to participate on a regional basis. We have to be seen, we have to be heard. In our numbers, there is strength. Not everybody is the state of Maricopa and the state of Phoenix. And there are alliances, but all policy and politics is based on relationships. And those relationships, like the vice mayor said earlier, are strengthened and facilitated by attending the League of Cities and Towns Conference. I, I know it's a crapshoot perhaps that term's been used, but I think the potential value for a small town at this moment in time, where it's our very last opportunity and our twin next door has done it. I can't imagine why this is not something that we would not give really serious consideration to and not for today or for tomorrow. I don't think everybody wants to go toilet to tap. I think we'd like to have the opportunity of being part of a regional water collection and distribution system. And the project that was meant of putting the water back in and putting it back in the CAP, it may look rude Goldberg, but it's genius. And as we all know in Arizona, and I'm just saying it to be funny, which it's not, but you know, whiskey is for drinking and water is for fighting. But it would be a very serious shame for this little community that's been here longer than most others. Back to 1876 for a settlement to not take advantage this evening of this opportunity to be in the presence of water planners with the CAP and SRP and the big boys at the table, the big girls at the table. So I got a bad feeling about this. It feels like it's going downhill before it's even had a chance to, uh, to really test its value for the community. And I just think especially if you're going to go for non-voting, that is a very modest request for money. And as they explained to us last time, we don't have to sign a 30-year agreement. We can separate ourselves as we get further down the road, if it looks like it's not a good investment. I think turning away in the beginning is short sighted, doesn't serve the community's potential well. I'm not pro growth and pro exponential subdivisions up here. But wet water and paper water are two different things and everybody who knows, who lives here knows that. And this could be wet water. And I just think for the small amount of money and we keep putting it in the bank to earn interest, this is an operational defensible expense. So that's just my opinion, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Are there other questions, Dusty?
So I I kind of agree. I, I think, uh, if you have the choice of being able to vote. I, I think if you have the choice of being able to vote on your future or standing by and watching as other people vote on your future, that's not a comfortable position to be in. So my preference honestly would be to amend what our draft motion is here to, to go for the, for the voting membership. I, I just, we're talking $400,000, $400,000 difference.
We're really looking at questions for.
Well, why wouldn't, why wouldn't we want to do? Why wouldn't we want to do that? Why wouldn't we want to pay the extra $400,000? I mean, it's not like we don't have money in the bank and it's not like we don't have a massive budget that we approved. And you are the lion's share of it, but why wouldn't we want a voting share?
Mayor, council member. Yeah, I, I don't know how much extra value we'd get. Uh, is, once we get entered into the, the committee, as even as a non-voting member, we'll be part of the group. So I'm, I'm not sure the extra value we would get out of being a voting member and sitting on the steering committee, um, which is about two-thirds of the members are part of that steering committee. There are several members that are not part of that. Carefree is one of them, but there's some larger ones, I believe. Um, I think it was Buckeye was one of the non-voting members, uh, uh, mistake, mistaken. So I'm not sure the extra value we'd get over that extra $400,000. And I'll be honest, I'd like to spend $400,000 on rehabbing one of our wells. But, um, you know, long-term, is that a good thing? I don't, I don't see the extra value we'd get out of being a, um, a voting member of the steering committee at this point. I think.
Brad, did you, Brad or Michelle, do you want to take a crack at that question? Why, why would you go from a, up to the voting membership from the, the lower level? Do you have any thoughts on that? No?
I'll, I'll ask Brad.
Oh, there you go. That's.
So thank you. Yeah, mayor and council, I really think the policy question in front of you as it relates to that is funding. Funding today, are you, are you interested in putting those dollars today? Or Sean mentioned, will you when staff comes back to you in a year? Cause we know the town's going to have a challenge meeting the shortages, uh, potentially coming on the Colorado River in the next two years. And where do you want to put those dollars? In particular, those either dollars to join or dollars to, to upgrade to a voting membership. I think that's really the question is will you have the, the financial resources to do both? And that's really the question. I know you asked specifically whether voting or not. Um, I, you know, I, I'm kind of more aligned with Sean. Uh, the big boys around the table and Sean and I have worked with one of those jurisdictions. Uh, they kind of drive the conversation. So being at the table is one of the council members mentioned, uh, you know, is a good idea in terms of providing long-term resiliency to your water supplies. Uh, I'm not sure the value for the dollar extra, uh, knowing how much, uh, what's going to be coming in front of you, city council in the near future, uh, uh, in terms of shoring up additional water supplies in preparation for CAP shortage.
So in preparation for the CAP shortage, it's a kind of a follow-on. How much, how much water does $400,000 buy? How many acre feet?
Um, if I'll take this one, none. Because that's just the study. That's just the first payment to get in the room.
Asking, if we allocate money to the, an additional $400,000, how much water are we not able to buy on the market?
Well, I, I don't think they can answer that question, not knowing our, our finances, but.
Well, we have to, we have to have kind of an idea how much an acre photo water costs.
I mean, that is kind of, that's a great question. And unfortunately, there's not really a water store that has a price tag. So it kind of depends on where you get the water and what infrastructure it takes to get it to you. If the closest thing I can think of to sort of going to the water store and what $400,000 would buy would be if you were to buy storage credits on the open market, which you don't have physical access to, but you might someday figure that out. You would be able to get, um, maybe 670 credits today for that $400,000, which would be 670 acre feet, which would cover a year's worth of shortage potentially. I mean, depending on the shortage too, that's an unknown.
I don't know. I, it hasn't changed my mind. I still think that we're better off being a voting member.
Mayor, if I, mayor, if I may.
Yep.
So, um, the utilities director and, and Michelle and I were in an internal meeting with, um, SRP before we brought this before the council and had them, um, present to the council. And it was pretty clear in listening to them, because we had questions about what is really the difference between the two, uh, you know, the, the non-voting and the voting member status. And it's not, to me, it's the value isn't there. And I think we've heard that the big boys are going to be sitting at the table and, and a lot of decisions were coming kind of late to the party. And so we're not going to probably be able to influence a lot other than what we're going to be seeking as part of this consortium, which is getting so much in the way of acre feet, um, allocated to us. So my, my thing is, um, Sean, what is the cost for like one well? We're looking at the Vermish well, what does that cost to, to do a rehab of that?
Well, if we don't have to redo the casing and we can just put new pump and motor in, we could probably do that for under, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars is to start off. If we have to drill a new casing, that's when it can get up to, uh, eight, 800,000 to a million dollars. That's what we're trying to.
My point in bringing that up is that showing real dollars, we know we're going to have to bring wells online to kind of get us through this, this kind of interim period. Um, what can you realistically expect out of that well for the 200,000? Like how many acre feet or such?
In the case of Vermish well, you know, we actually have an ability to pump that up. I think it's, uh, it was 300 gallons per minute, but we actually are three, we're limited to 78 acre feet out of that well. So we.
So it's how, how many, 78?
78 acre feet is what we're limited to in Vermish per the permit. Um, the right well, which is at the plant site, actually does not have a, a, um, a permit limit to it. Is actually drilled prior to the groundwater management act. So it actually is unlimited. My fear there is how much water we're going to get out of that before we get into water quality issue.
So we also have, I'm all for the wells. I mean, I definitely need it, but one of the things we have to be careful with, with the wells is we still have a good, what, 400 homes on wells? So we're going to be limited in how much water we can draw. I mean, I, I agree with you, we need to draw it out. But that's, that's a short-term fix. Because if you take a look at the ADWR website and you go to the three wells, they, they measure, you know, routinely, uh, we're down somewhere between 15 and, and 35% from where we were 10 years ago. So groundwater is also going to be an issue. So we get that for a short period of time. But then we might have screwed some of our other residents. And then we have to put in more infrastructure to take care of them. So I, it's kind of a zero-sum game. So I, I don't know what the answer is, but it just seems like to me the $400,000 is, is kind of a no-brainer. Personal opinion.
Okay, questions down this end of the table. Yeah, Cynthia?
Uh, yes, Sean, a question for you. If we did use 120,000 from the general fund for this fiscal year, uh, to move forward on this project, would that negate, uh, the ability to come back and ask for additional funding from the general fund for any of the well-related projects that you anticipate for this fiscal year?
Uh, mayor, council member, always come back and ask for money, whether you guys give it to me. Uh, I say that jokingly, but, um, you know, the additional $120,000 to pay for it this year because we didn't identify it, because I, I don't see anywhere we could move money within the operational fund and the, the current capital fund, actually a lot of it's already been expended. We have issues like, uh, there's, um, money set aside to do the, um, water treatment plant improvements, because that's tied to our permit to do that. So I don't see where we could move stuff around to free up another $120,000. If you look at our CAP, it looks huge. That's largely the City of Phoenix interconnect, which is already under contract. So, um, yeah, well, that's why we're working to come back and to quantify what do we need to do with each of the wells? What that can be like, get down to construction cost estimates and then bring that forward. You know, we have a short window here with the capital program for next year to bring that back to you. As far as whether that will impact us right now, I don't think it would. That's why I, I, um, do think it may be useful for us to have a seat at the table. Um, this is a long-term, like water resources is, um, we have a long-term perspective. So is this something as we bring the wells back online, does the wells help us out for 10 years? Then knowing that we can backstop that with SRP water in the future, maybe that's an opportunity for us to look at a long-term perspective on our water portfolio.
Tom?
I think there's a great value in participating with other municipalities. But, uh, Sean, would you, uh, talk to us a little bit about the participation we could do with Phoenix, uh, without this project?
Mayor, council member, so, um, right now the town does have, um, an IGA in place with Phoenix to, uh, divert, treat and deliver our CAP up to, up to 1,000 gallons a minute or 1.4 million gallons a day of, of our CAP supply. So that's about half of our CAP allocation. We've had some discussions, I think favorable discussions with them with the idea of a wa, of an affluent, uh, um, exchange with them. Uh, what that means is, uh, as I bring forward every, every quarter, um, there's a, there's a imbalance in, in our deliveries of water to Rancho Manyana, which is our largest single water customers and the contractual obligations up there. So, um, part of that is that, uh, when they need the water, the, the lease, which is in the winter time, is when we produce most affluent and we're still producing backwash water from our treatment plant. So typically we overflow the lake system. So that is very between 80 and 50 to 80 acre feet a year. Um, we can get control over that by a connection to the City of Phoenix and doing a water exchange with the City of Phoenix from our affluent to their sewer system. And that's, they were looking at that and they said, yes, that makes sense to them that they're willing to partner with us to do that connection. There's some physical improvements required, but we can make that connection and get control over that delivery mechanism to Rancho Manyana. And then we could look at if we could bring some wells online, if they're viable for a few years even, then that actually we could, means we could send more affluent to Phoenix and actually get an exchange of water. So I think, and that can be leveraged through the City of Phoenix interconnect. The town has spent so much money on that interconnect site. I'd like to try and leverage that as much as we can. I know there's physical restrictions in their distribution system, getting water up here, but the more water we can work with them on. The other thing that we can do with Phoenix right now is actually recharge. Uh, we have access to three of their recharge wells. So, but that's going to cost us money. That, that is about 100 times more expensive than recharging with Central Arizona Project, but we can actually recharge with them and get them to withdraw that water for us. So we could start banking for the next two years to put water into the ground that we can work with Phoenix to bring that back out. So I, I think leveraging the relationships with Phoenix is a good thing. And again, that's why we approached the subject. If we were to go down the path with SRP staff, if you know, could we work with you on an IGA extension to, um, allow, uh, instead of us having to work with the, the, um, the SCIF project and work with downstream users, can we just work with SRP to come up with a, a divert, treat, deliver from an SRP, uh, distribution system up to the, to the town, which would be a little bit more costly because we're more booster stations to fall, but they were agreeable to that also. So, um, I think we've got a good relationship and I like to build on that, that adjacent facility with, with Phoenix.
Uh, so you, you've not had a question yet, Catherine?
Well, I've just been listening, uh, both at the other meeting with SRP and then tonight. And I think the bottom line is that, um, these are unprecedented times and that we have to take actions that we might not normally have taken otherwise. Um, it's a very high-risk opportunity, um, with probably a low chance of return, given the fact that the Verde River hasn't had excess water in, you know, forever. Um, but, uh, I don't really think we have a choice. Between the high dollar at the table, uh, membership, I, I absolutely am not in favor of that. We're not even at that level yet. Um, once they get to the construction portion of it, maybe then the discussions will actually be meaningful about allocations. Uh, but until then, I think it's only prudent that we listen to the experts, uh, both our water attorney and Brad, who's an expert and has been working as a water resource manager for decades, as well as Sean, uh, to, to be a non-member. And I'm willing to go that, to that length.
Sean, my question, turn back to the slide with the issues on it. There we go. That looked, that, that, that bottom statement down there. You know, I, I have a great fear we don't have the, the staff to handle all the things we're doing. Uh, with the interconnect project, the wells, the reclaimed water, the Rancho Manyana situation, uh, on the, the fact that we have to rebuild our water treatment plant, uh, you know, that the issues go on and on and on, and we're putting all the meters in. I mean, you can, uh, uh, we're rebuilding the whole system from, to one that can reliably support the, the population that we have in this town. I, I don't see the funding, but I see the, the ability to manage this, uh, the SRP project with all the other things. And we don't have a problem 15 years from now. We got a problem two years from now. And we have to focus with laser, we have to, like a laser on the issues in two years, which is the wells, the recycle, the water meters, the Rancho Manyana, on and on and on. Political issues, we're, we're doing, we spent more time on the Bartlett Dam in public in the meetings here, but 99% is like an iceberg. Most of the work going on is for two years from now. Uh, and this is additional work on, on top of that with, which will tend to defocus us. Um, I, I think staff has got to be able to say that we can take care of the two-year issue before we even consider moving, uh, to an issue that's 15 years away for what is essentially floodwater. That's, that's what this is floodwater that requires logistics. It requires relationships. It requires the whole, um, SRP system to kind of rethink storage. You've got to have storage because it's there one year and then it's not for five years. And what do people drink in those four years in between? So, uh, this is a very high risk, but can the staff pull off all this stuff? I, I don't worry about the funding. This is only 200,000 bucks. A, a, and we get to see the next card. I, I don't worry about that. But can, do we have the resources to balance all these balls in there? I'm looking at the town manager.
So it's a very good question. And, and there's a number of things that, as you know, we've been behind on. For instance, our, you know, integrated utility master plan, um, should have come to you before. But because of just workload that staff has and, and being able to keep up with the day-to-day and, and doing the proper planning, it takes a lot of time and resources and we don't have the staffing resources. So, um, so that's a very good point that the mayor's bringing up. Um, my, my take on this is, um, there is risk with it. And it's not very clear. Um, this is just a backstop or backup for our current, um, CAP allocation. Um, there's going to be some years when we probably have more water in good years than what we, what, than what we can do with it. So it's going to have to be stored. And then there's going to be years where we don't get even probably a, a fraction of, of, of our allocation through this. There's a lot of unknowns. We don't know what the cost is truly going to be. Um, we don't know how it's going to be, um, allocated to the different members that are part of this, um, consortium. Um, we, we don't know what the feds are going to do. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of, um, questions. I think it's an ingenious idea. And SRP, what really impresses me is SRP has been around for, you know, well over 100 years and they've had some really good experience in, um, developing and managing these types of projects and working collaboratively with the federal government. So, um, this is truly a, a policy question. I think, Mary, your point though, about the amount of effort and, and resources and all the things that we have in the near term, those do concern me because, um, you know, we got to get something going on with Rancho Manyana because right now we're, we're giving them too much in the way of water resources. Um, you know, as far as the, um, treated effluent. And there, there's other ways, there are other things that, as Sean mentioned, we might be able to, to, uh, work out arrangements with Phoenix. So I think we're talking about a lot of things in the near term. And this is definitely probably 15 years out. And, and again, I think it, it's risky, but the risk is really probably 18 months to two years into it. And in which case we may just decide at that point just to walk away. Um, because the construction cost may be really scary. And it may be the feds, um, from what we're understanding, the feds may be, um, taking at least 50% of that water. And so, but they are also paying for 50% of the cost. Um, so there's a lot of unknowns. So. So again, this has been couched tonight as a policy question. I know a lot of you are looking for us to provide you factual information that can help you make this important decision. But I think the way it's been presented tonight with pros and cons and the issues and concerns and other unknowns. It's it's the best we could do at this point in time. I'm sorry, it's not typically how we do our staff level work, but it's the best we can do with the information we have at this time.
Other questions from council? I imagine there's, yes, there is probably comment on this, so we'll open up.
Jody Powers.
I learned more from Sean last week about water issues in Cave Creek than I ever dreamt I would know. I'm very impressed, very impressed with everything that I've learned. I have all these notes. I have this many notes from last week. And Cynthia, welcome.
Thank you.
Very glad you're on board also. My name is Jody Powers. I live at 41902 North Old Stage Road, which is Morning Star and Spur Cross. And after attending the meeting last week and learning all about our needs that we have, there is a gamble in doing the Salt River Project piece of this. There's nothing is, nothing is certain in any of it, though, from what I'm, what I'm assuming. So why wouldn't, I guess it'd be more, I'm not a gambler, I'll tell you that first. But it would be worth a gamble perhaps that we had another option because it's my understanding that we're one of the few towns that get 90% of our water from CAP. And what happens if there's a gamble there and something happens and we don't get? They've already said they're cutting it back, right?
Yeah, so we understand with the reallocation is going to happen, redistribution on the central Colorado River supplies, post 2026, so going into calendar year 2027, we expect cuts to impact Arizona, which will then come back to us as a subcontractor on the Colorado River.
So that's a gamble, making sure that they're going to be able to supply us. So I and several of my neighbors would like for you to vote for joining the membership of the Bartlett Lake Dam Expansion Project. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Phelps.
Hi, everybody. David Phelps here, Cave Creek resident. Seems like it's been a long time since I got to speak to you guys. I wrote down here a timeline. You know, this issue really wasn't a town issue until April 4th of this year. That's when we started talking about it. We had somebody at a council debate introduction. Jim Grubb brought this issue to a head. Mayor, you responded to it and a week or so later, Ernie wrote to one of the town tabloids about how this had been stalled out by Ernie and a town manager in 2017, I believe. And that Ernie's opinion at that time was is that this was a very high risk, low return gamble that it was akin to buying lottery tickets and that if it came up again, you'd still say no. So I'm not expecting any support from Ernie tonight. And I know the mayor wasn't enthusiastically supportive of it during the election cycle. And I didn't get the impression that Tom McGuire was. I did get the impression that Cynthia might vote for something like this if it made sense for the future. And Catherine, you're all about CAP and CAP representatives said, this is cheap insurance. So that tells me that if CAP is saying this is cheap insurance or this is good insurance, how could we afford not to be part of it? And so I'm on board with Councilmember Rhodes. I thank you for bringing this back the way you did. I thank the mayor for allowing the discussion to be had and Councilmember Ogerton as well. And I'm really hoping there's four votes, but I'm also really hoping that there's four votes for a seat at the table. Because when you look at who's not at the table, who's not at the table is City of Avondale. They have the TB, T E P Canal, Tucson Electric Canal down there. And they're converting a lot of farmland into residential in Avondale. The City of Buckeye is at the table. Many conserva- many water districts are at the table. The Carefree Water Company is not at the table, but they have producing wells. And they have enough producing wells to bridge themselves for the cutbacks that are coming on the CAP. They're in very good shape. They have four connections to the City of Scottsdale, four. Happened to be up there on the high side with a couple of them up on Pima where the water can, you know, kind of be pushed with the gravity, excuse me. City of El Mirage, they're not at the table. Got to help them. I just don't know how we can afford to not take a shot, spend the extra 400 bucks. I mean, we just, the issue before this that Sean presented, we came up with another $600,000 on a deal that we did back when that developer came to the town and wanted to develop his subdivision. And we offered to run a water line over to there so to give him fire flow back then. And the bill came due, just like it always does. It started out being a $500,000 expense and by the time it got to us, it was more. There's nothing, no big surprise to that. I would say that we would be doing ourselves a big favor to get a seat at the table. We want to be part of the SCIF. The SCIF gives us the ability as our, as a town to take the water as it's coming out of the SRP system and put it back into the CAP system. That means we are relationship building that we need to do as well with the other members who are a part of this, the other 22 members, is less dependent. So we have more independence by being part of the SCIF. What we're going to want to do, if we become part of this and become part of the SCIF, is it opens our world up to bigger relationships that maybe we use the SCIF at times. Maybe we front water to other communities when we have abundance because the CAP is flowing right. I mean, I look at the chance that we took with the NIA water and I stood and I said, yes, let's do that $225,000. And how many years did we get to do that? One?
No, we still actually have NIA water.
Mayor, can I ask?
We're going to get the marshal on you anytime now.
I'm trying to learn as I go here. I do. I do have another question for Sean if you would indulge me on that. I would really like to know when when you say we're putting the City of Phoenix, when we're putting our treated water into their sewer, do you mean we're putting it into the sewer that they're going to then process? From there?
That was the thought because we actually talked about making a connection to the reuse system. But there's several issues with us, our reuse water commingling with their reuse water. So they they suggested we put effluent into their their sewer system that then we could get a water exchange as they process that.
So they're going to treat our treated sewage waters, what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it becomes a water resource for us.
Thank you, David. Like this brilliant link that we could make from logistics move would be is instead of growing our sewer like we show in the master plan, we could just sell our sewer to the City of Phoenix for recharge.
Okay, thank you.
Another content, just another idea. All right. Thanks, guys.
Councilmember-elect Friedman.
Well, that sounds like a nice title.
So, okay. Joe Friedman, 40020 North 71st Street. I've been watching this water thing for a lot of years. This is, I mean, if it was to happen, if you had that crystal ball, it'd be great. But is it going to happen? I mean, was this a rush job, in my opinion? We just put it on the docket like in the last less than two months. And all of a sudden, did you guys have enough time to evaluate this properly? If you would have gone with two or three years, like somebody else said, that we should have had when it should have been introduced, maybe now you'd have enough time. But I'm I'm just kind of thinking that in all these other towns that you mentioned are big cities, Phoenix, Scottsdale, they have lots of money, you know, we don't have a lot of money. I think this is a risk and I'm just saying that, you know, I'm not on the council right now, but that's just my feeling. Does it make sense to take a risk to throw their dice down? Did we throw the dice down in what was it, 2005, when we bought the water company that put us into debt $66 million? We're finally starting to pay off. I mean, I don't know. If I I'll just say if I had a vote on this thing right now with this being a rush job and everything, we have other things we have to be concerned with, I'd vote against it.
That concludes the public input.
Okay, so we've, we're ready then for a motion. I will make the motion. Tom, you start the talks.
I, yeah, this is a motion to direct and authorize the town manager to submit a letter of intent to the Salt River Project requesting admission to the Bartlett Dam Modification Feasibility Study Steering Committee as a non-voting member.
Second.
Okay, you have the motion.
You have to vote for, you have to make a motion for a positive in order to bring it up. And that's what it sounded like. But I have a great deal of concern about this. CAP can put water into the SRP system. It's not clear that SRP could put water into the CAP system. The CAP system is taking water from the Colorado River. It's relatively uniform. It's a relatively constant source. With the CAP, with this SRP water, you've got it coming down from less controlled situation. The graphic that you showed before had a red line on it. Can you go back to that graphic? I don't know if you can do that.
Does the graphic show the watershed?
I, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I think it's the second or third slide, third or fourth slide, right?
And I'm very, if you look at the red lines on there, I'm very concerned that between Bartlett Reservoir and by the time you get down to the SCIF, which would be the end of the red line and also from Saguaro Lake, you've got water that they really can't control the quality of that water. And CAP is pretty careful about what they put into their system. So I think that's why we've seen CAP give water to SRP. And SRP has not given water to CAP because I think that the standards, the the chance is a little bit different. I think CAP really tries to control what they're doing. I I think that we need wet water now and and we need water that we can depend on. And by my calculations, this would might go until 2040 before we could see this. Because when do government projects end on time? When are they within budget? I think, you know, if you look historically, I think there's a real chance there. I'm very concerned about what's happening in the watershed of Bartlett Reservoir. You've got towns up there like Cottonwood, Camp Verde, Chino Valley, Prescott Valley, Sedona. These are not in the active management area. So what that means is that those towns can take out water from their groundwater without the limits that we would have here. So as those communities are growing, I think that's going to affect the amount of water that goes into Bartlett Reservoir. And it can only decrease that amount of water. So that and and also if we look at climate change, I think that the the trend is pretty clear that it is reducing the amount of water that is going from watersheds into these reservoirs. So I'm I'm very concerned about this. And the whole idea of, you know, maybe it can be there for one year. And yet I look at Bartlett Reservoir and most of the time now it it seems to be half full or less. So, you know, can you get water if it might not be available? That will be a part of the analysis that they'll do, I'm sure. But it really concerns me. Thank you.
You have the second, Cindy.
Yes. I think at this point, we still have more questions than answers about if we should and how we could enter into this process. But at least it does put the town of Cave Creek in the position for a potential new water resource option. And it's it's not certainly SRP's fault that we're late to the table in the discussion. You know, that's on the town for considering this option as we go forward. I think a lot's been said about the value of developing relationships with other jurisdictions. And that's important to keep in mind. You know, we don't have to invent, in fact, we can't reinvent the water will, but we could certainly jump on the water wagon and participate with other jurisdictions that have more experience and are looking to create new options for the entire region.
Other comments?
I'd just like to clarify that the board member from Central Arizona Project, who was at the SRP presentation, is one of 15 elected board members on CAP's board. She came representing herself. Her opinion was her own. She did not come with a formal letter from the CAP Board President advocating that's that Cave Creek participates.
That's true.
Good, good, because assuming that somebody else might have thought that she was representing the organization, she is not. She is representing herself. Secondly, if we have a shortage of staff who are able to attend the the meetings at SRP, I would volunteer to attend. I think if board members of our council is eligible to represent Cave Creek and we don't have the staff who are able to attend, I'm happy to be that person.
Go ahead, Ernie.
Yeah.
Take it.
Nothing is certain and certainly nothing is sure. This feels very much like do something, even if it's wrong. I don't think you can rely on the watershed to to deliver the water. And as such, I will not be, I'd rather see the the finances go to something that we know can work like the the connection from the sewer plant to the City of Phoenix and trading trading back for potable water as opposed to to taking a crap shoot for something that's 15 years out. It doesn't make sense to me.
Our general plan shows that we're going to grow to about 15,000 people by 2035. Where's that water coming if it's not coming from here?
Well, the the people that come in subdivisions have to bring their own water. So the week, I mean, we're, our problem is water, not in 15 years, especially, this is floodwater. This is, and it takes an incredible number of different things to bring it in. And you cannot build a single house on water like this. It just will not support it because it's not not reliable. There is a crisis coming and it's it's not in the news yet. You see little bits here and there. But once the Colorado River is cut back in 2027, that is when we start to reallocate what's left. And our town is on the tip of that spear. I think Michelle used that term at one point because we are the town that's most dependent on Colorado River water. And that means that we have to have, part of our solution is probably going to be political. We frankly have to be seen as being very aggressive at finding water supplies if if we're going to have credibility with the political reallocation that occurs at that time. This this kind of checks that box. This is the entirely secondary to the next two years. We could do or not do this project and it would have no effect. We're not going to build a single house off this water because it's unreliable. It it would be another source of water in our portfolio, but it would take an incredible amount of storage, logistics, getting it from one system to the other system. But I think we can do those things. I'm not afraid of that at all. I think that is something because I think that the, when the crisis hits, I think all the communities are going to be looking to work together to find solutions. And we've had outstanding success with working with Phoenix. And we have more more projects that we're looking at them right now, whether it's other connection over in the Desert Hills area. whether it's other connection over in the Desert Hills area or the sewer water or the, the interconnect project, which by the way, is probably where this water would come in. For those who thought it, I think it's not necessary. I, I agree that it's going to be double the cost and twice the time. There are going to be lawsuits. It's going to be environmental lawsuits. It's going to be eagle nesting areas. It's going to be historical areas. It's going to be flooding additional. So, I mean, it just has a lot of things to it. And having said all those things that against it, I want to see another card. It's $200,000 and I, for the, for the non-voting, I, I cannot support the voting membership because I don't think there is any rational benefit that anyone has stated from having that. And, and that's for water that you can't build a single house with. So I, I want to be in there long enough to see what happens and to do our political work. And if it turns out to be something that, that works and we can do all the, if the long shot comes through, then we have some water that makes our town water system more reliable, but it doesn't make it bigger. That's, that's, that's apparent to me. So I'm, I'm going to vote for the $200,000 with proviso that there's a good chance the entire project dies. There's a good chance that it's too expensive for us or other people. There are just a lot of things out there. But I, I am absolutely unafraid of the funding issue. We have got to borrow money to, for two reasons. One is fairness, that, that the people today should not be developing all the water resources for the people tomorrow. Everybody needs to spread those payments out so that everybody pays their fair share. And I forgot my second reason. Well, because we don't have the money, because it's, because if you, if you borrow a million dollars, it takes $70,000 a year to cover that, the, that payment. And I'd rather have the $70,000 on, on my water bill and my neighbor's water bill than I would the million dollars all at once. So I'm, I'm going to be a big advocate of, of, of putting all of our water projects that we can, that we come up with, the ones that make sense into, into bonding. Has everybody had a chance to comment now? Yeah, okay, I think we're, I think we're ready for a vote then.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
No.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Aye.
Councilmember Ogerton.
Aye.
Councilmember Bunch.
No.
Vice Mayor Royer.
Yes.
Mayor Morris.
Aye. Okay, it passes five to two and, and I, I just want to say that I, I, I think that there's plenty of reasons to justify the no votes. I, I was right there too, so. Okay. That concludes our business tonight, I believe. So thank you for coming. This meeting's adjourned.